Good evening, and I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Village of Webster Morton Trust Days to Order, September 28th, I believe it's 2:00, 7:30. So if you would stand with me, please. Judy, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You're seated, and thank you very much. This evening, we would like to begin with a very special proclamation, and I would like to call up any member of the band that's here, and Barbara Matura, in particular, if you would come up here. Any other member of the band want to come up?
One.
There you go.
Today was a very special day in that it was, or is, the Webster Village Band Day. And so in lieu of that, I'd like to read this proclamation in honor of the band's 50th year. The Village of Webster Proclamation. Whereas the Village Band was established 50 years ago this year by its founders Stan Maruzak and Gerald Barrett on September 11th, 1967, and whereas the Webster Village Band started with a stage and a converted school bus, then for many years was at the Band Shell at Spry School, and now performs at the Band Shell on Foster Drive. And whereas the Village Band started 50 years ago with 10 members and has grown into an organization of approximately 60 members, and whereas the Village Band has played over 600 concerts, including many special concerts and the traditional Christmas concert, and has become a mainstay in our community. Therefore be it resolved that I, Darryl Byers, Mayor of the Village of Webster, do hereby declare Thursday, September 28th, 2017 as Webster Village Band Day in the Village of Webster to commemorate 50 years of wonderful music and beautiful melodies made by our outstanding Village Band. I congratulate you, and what a wonderful day. And also, in recognition of the 50 years, we have a plaque that I'd like to present to the band. Recognition Award presented to the Village, Webster Village Band. Congratulations on your 50th anniversary with our sincere appreciation for bringing beautiful melodies to our community. 1967 through 2017, the Village of Webster. And if you would like me to, if you're looking for a home for him, just hook that up in the village hall for him. If you have a place for him, that'd be awesome.
I'm going to share with the band their name.
Oh, yes, absolutely, absolutely, Don.
That's wonderful. We'd love to thank the village for being so supportive all of these years. I mean, we couldn't do any of this without the people. Thank you so much. It's awesome. We love what we do.
And you're worth it.
We love what you do, too. It's so unfortunate that we usually have Village Board meetings on Thursday nights, and your concerts are on Thursday nights, and it was an honor for me to be there on your last concert night this year because we didn't have a board meeting. So I have several of the, I'm off on the side, I have several of your numbers recorded, and at some point they will be up on our village website, and so we'll be able to click on them and hear some of that music. Awesome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you.
And thank you for the support that you've given us. It is, without doubt, instrumental in making us almost the only band with a 50-year continuous. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Stan almost persuaded me to get my clarinet out.
Oh. He's bringing his sound.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would mention that Marcia could not be here. Malcolm, she had, she called me up speaking kind of with a mouthful probably of cotton. She had emergency dental surgery today, so we'll keep her in prayer for a speedy recovery. Moving on, next item of the business, we'll open the floor for public comment.
Richard Wilber, 20 Elm Street. I don't have any public comment tonight. I have a question, which, see, our attorney is not here tonight, so I don't know how much you can disclose on the subject, but it's been a long time that we've been under, the village has been under suit over the odors from the sewer plant by people who moved in knowing they had a sewer plant across the street from them, and I just wondered if there's anything you can tell us on this lawsuit, other than the fact that I realize that we've spent over $25,000 towards a suit already in peace, so I wondered if there's anything else you can tell us, what's going on. Is it progressing?
It is progressing. I believe that all of the depositions have been taken at this particular time, and I believe that it will be going into trial in October, this month coming up. Beyond that, there is a point where it's going to conclude, but that's where we're going.
So far, it's cost the village a lot of money, not only in the legal fees, but the loss of use of the sludge and leaves for making compost, which has cost the village a lot of money to haul the sludge away and the leaves in the village to store stuff. So I hope we hear something very soon. Thank you.
Well, as I said, that's right. Currently in the timeline, depositions, I think, are done in October is due trial. Anyone else? Yeah, hopefully.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Pardon?
Maybe you're going to talk about the same thing.
Well, if so, then they don't get to hear from me. It's good.
Gordon Hartley, 240 London Road. I'm addressing the board about the clock down here on North Avenue, which doesn't work most of the time. I was instrumental in the beginning, putting John and Jackie Lenz, who's fostered the idea to actually create this, the clock, as a group, collect money and a bunch of charity, you know, contributed to it, and my family did. And so the, I think I introduced it to the board at a workshop one night, and it took off from there. And I forget how much money was raised, but I'm going to guess it was around $8,000, $9,000. Typically, one of these clocks, like you see in front of the bank down here, at that time were around $25,000 to $30,000. They had a sale on them, of a different type of clock, and so the village bid on it and bought that clock. I don't know if village funds were put into it also at that time or not, but they got this clock and it had a substantial discount from the going value of clocks, and the result is what you see down there is that, you know, you pay for what you get. And I'd like either fix the clock so it works all the time, or substitute the clock with something else. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. One of the things that, as I've driven by and commented to a number of people on it, is to put four arrows, one in each direction, giving the time, giving the time in four different areas, like the time in Nome and the time in San Francisco. However, I've considered that as part of the parks, and we might be able to put that into, considered changing the inside of it. And I have not approached the bank. I know that theirs functions all the time, and I don't know the cost of it, but it's something that we can look into and maybe replace the internal workings rather than the whole thing with something new. I don't know. But Parks and Rec, we should have some money available to let them do that, so.
Yeah, the clock gets considerable cost to replace the inside. It's got a synchronizer in it, and the face of the clock that runs it's very similar to one, like a wall clock that you get with the batteries in it, but then it's all run through a synchronizer because there's four sides. And we looked at there's considerable cost at getting that synchronizer repaired and the four sides. We've chased it around for a while. The clock itself is starting to pit pretty bad now on the stand itself, so we're trying to figure, and I think Mr. Hartley is absolutely correct, we've got to either invest in that clock. It may have gone out of business sale because the place that we got it from is no longer in business, and it is very difficult to get somebody to either work on that clock. We've changed parts, and they're very expensive and hard to come by, so I think you're absolutely correct. We've got to look at something. And if we do take the faces down and any arrows, I'd like to spell Village correctly also.
Yeah, they're good.
And two I's in Village on every side of that clock, too. I always tell people it's the old English spelling, so they don't think we're south east of us.
I mean, you could check receipts.
Thank you. We're, we're, we'd like to listen to that. Home rule. Yes. Mr. Elder.
Just very quickly, since you had honored the band, I just want to also just add that congratulations as well. I had the distinct honor of being the liaison to the board for a lot of years to the band. I went to the band meetings, all the concerts, and I want to just tell you what a great group of people these are, and they want to tell you how hard they work. You have no idea how hard they practice. And it's the music you get is the, sort of the outcome of just labor, just a lot of labor into that music. And they're so good at it, and they have such a great selection of music. And the music, for those of you who don't know, is stored right here. And they'll come in and they'll sort through that music, and they'll figure out what they're going to play, and it is just an incredible organization. So it was really great working with everybody. And I actually got the honor to play with them. I had my, I played the upright bass, I was playing electric, but I played the upright bass with the band a few times, including the Satangial Concert in 2005, and that was a lot of fun as well. So just congratulations.
No pressure. No pressure, Darryl.
I'll say this, I'll take my bass, you get your clarinet, we'll be nothing.
Talking about a bass, my fourth grade granddaughter had the opportunity to choose the musical instrument that she would like to now play at school for the school band or orchestra. Her first choice was drums, but she actually then chose the double bass.
Yes.
So she is, she's about this tall, and I can envision her in some years standing on a stool and, you know, playing this thing. But she won't be in the band, I guess, but she could be.
She could be.
She could be. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Then we'll close the public, having portion of the meeting, and we'll have to regular board review. This evening, I'd like to move to resolutions to approve the minutes. First would be the Village Workshop of September 5th, 2017. Anything you'd like to address in there?
Pretty much our presentation.
We talked about the Parks and Rec Committee and the Village Welcome Packet, which will be on our agenda for a little bit later tonight. And also, we had a presentation given by Clement Chung of La Bella Associates regarding an update on the wastewater treatment plant and the study that's being done. So those are available, the study's available for you to look at, and those follow. If there's no other comments, then I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Village Board Workshop of September 5th.
Trustee Belkane. Trustee Lancy. Trustee Abolito. Trustee Lauer. Mayor Byers. Motion passed.
Next, we have the minutes from the board meeting of September 14th, and as you can imagine, we'll have to look that over. The resolution that we made about the state and local tax deduction, that has been sent to all of the individuals that were listed. Senator Kilbrant, Schumer, Representative Slaughter, State Senator Pam Hellman, who responded that she did receive an assembly in March of '07 as well. So that has been sent. Anybody have any comments? additions, contractions? And I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 14th, 2017.
I'll make that one. I'll second it.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Abolito.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Trustee Belkane. Mayor Byers. Motion passed.
Okay, next, we, take a look here at the claims and warrants. Well, and Judy, would that then, any questions that you have, or the other board members?
Questions I have got answered, so.
I'll say. Okay. I didn't have any. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Trustee Abolito.
Aye.
Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Belkane. Mayor Byers. Motion passed.
Next, we have a resolution for the Village of Webster approving the standard workday recording for Attorney David Mayers and Thomas Indiano, and Director based on their record of activity, because I believe there's something that is required. Anyone have any questions to address to Jeri Seton this? Okay. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the standard workday recording for Attorney Mayor and Director Indiano.
I'll make that one. Sir.
Trustee Belkane. Trustee Lauer.
Aye.
Trustee Abolito.
Aye.
Trustee Lancy.
Aye.
Mayor Byers. Motion passed.
Okay, next, I would like, Mr. Elder, if you'd like to come back and talk again and talk to us about the welcome packet.
Okay, so we had two items to really go through, is one was the survey and the other was the package. Actually, we got them both. I don't know which is the best one to start with, but we'll do the packet first because it's maybe easier. Joe, before I came in, gave me a few corrections as well, which were well done because they were just typos, so I'll make sure those are included in the corrections. So you should have received the letter. That's agreed, that would be the letter to try, it would be a tri, just fold it up as a tri-fold, and it would be on top of the pack, the brochures. So if I can just show you kind of what it looks like, you have the, when you open it up, you should see the letter, followed by the village's tri-fold about the general about the village of Webster. And then Josette, or Joe, I can't remember, no, Christina, I'm sorry, emailed me the village services, which I reformatted to a third of a sheet of paper, so I could just slip in each one of them as a summary of what services the village does offer. Then we have the historic preservation guide, the parks, the parks guide, and then there will be at some point near a bid one for the Business Improvement District, but as of yet, they haven't been able to discern if they have one. So I'm either going to, Robin will either give me one, or I'm going to be working with her to try to get one together. But there, so at some point, there'll be a Business Improvement District one in there as well. I'm not sure when that'll be right now, but it'll hopefully as soon as I can. So that would be the, that would be the goal. And then distribution, Josette brought up these village envelopes, and if the board is okay, I'd like to use the village's envelopes because it has the village's return address on it, which is easy. And then it'll say, "Welcome to the Village of Webster." I'll put a sticker on it, probably make it easy. And then might have a little sticker on the back, which is there to come on it to indicate, you know, why we're doing it. And then delivery would be, because we're only, I think we're talking probably less than 20 a month.
Yeah.
So I was thinking, why spend the postage? We'll just hand them out. I know there's got to be a deal to hand them out. We're only talking about 1.1 square mile, or 2.1 square mile, something like that, 1.1. So what, so we should just be able to get them out to people.
I'd be quite willing to. Having an address to go and introducing myself.
Yes. I think it'd be great for the board members to do that, so I can pre-stuff them. If I pre-stuff them and pre-label the names with the address on it, I think you could give it, I could give it to any of you that way at the time, and then just have them taken to the door. And again, this is a, this is a, hoping is a sort of work in progress. If there's things we want to add later or change later, just flip them out and put something else back in again. So it's not a, this doesn't have to be exactly like this forever, but it's a good, I think it might be a good start.
Well, if you want some help on the bid part of it.
Thank you. Yeah, I got to talk, I want to talk to Robin and see where her, where her mind is around it, and once I get a sense of that, maybe we can get something worked up for that. I mean, it might just be, oh, the other one will be here at the museum. I forgot, I didn't bring a copy, but Tom, Tom Pellet gave me 50, no, more than like 100 of the museums. There's a third sheet, so I'll put that behind everything as well. So hopefully, if you're a new resident, what'll happen is you'll get this information, you'll have lots of contact numbers, lots of information about what we do in the village, and you'll have lots of organizational information to talk about all of, all the documents. So, and that's the, that's the goal, so.
How do you determine who the new law on?
Well, we can use, we'll use the data we have available, which is either, which is probably going to be information we discern through like the paper, transfer notices, things like that.
Real estate transactions.
Yeah, real estate transactions. So, I mean, we'll lag, we'll probably lag a little bit behind when they get here by a few weeks.
Yeah.
But that's, that's okay, because the first couple of weeks, as Darryl pointed out, I think he's exactly right, when someone gets here, they're going crazy anyways. So we don't want them to lose the thing we're getting them, so if we let them calm down for a few weeks, then they may be more likely to take a look at it and figure out what they, what they want to do.
But anyway, yeah, if anyone notices that there's a house up for sale or something like that, just take into account the address, and we'll go from there.
Absolutely. I mean, we're also giving them a lot of website information, which is, which is a good thing because a lot of people go over to the internet now to understand what services, what's out there, and I think that's the other thing, so they can, even if they lose a brochure, but just keep the letter, which is, I'm hoping what, you know, the letter is the thing that they even hang up on their refrigerator or something, so that they can access that for the numbers and the major websites, that also is just a benefit right there. So, you know, want to know about the Jazz Fest? Websterbid.com, right? Want to know about what's happening for the Veterans Luncheon, Village of Webster? And that kind of, so you just kind of just work that off, and I think, you know, the way things have been working, people go to the internet so much for this information, what we really need to do is figure out, make it easy for them to get there, so.
I think it's, I think I, or a resident and anybody from the board came tonight or with that, I would be really happy to see somebody.
Yeah.
Wasn't there something done a long, long time ago?
There was.
I remember when I moved to Webster, I actually had business, it had some coupons.
Yeah, we had like, there was like a Vulcan wagon type thing. And people, you would get a package, you may still, I don't know if you still get that or not, but a jar.
No, the jar thingy, that case of jar, remember that? Oh, yeah, yeah, the rubber.
Yeah, oh, yes.
My favorite thing.
So, but I just don't think that it's either as common, or it's given to everyone, or I'm not sure how that actually works anymore, but it does, but even so, since that's so oriented towards the commercial side of it, which is coupons and the businesses, which is great, but we've been more oriented towards the user community has to offer.
Yeah.
So, and if you move into, you know, most of the homes in the village right now are stored. I mean, even the ones in Shandrap, which we kind of don't think that way, most of them are over 50 years old, so they're kind of defined them. So it's good for people who are moving into the village to know, you know, the village they're moving into.
And we get the deed transfers from the town every month?
Yeah.
That'd be good.
That's another way of doing it.
That's a really good thing.
So I'll try to, I'll try to kind of pull the information together that I, that I can get, and then we'll utilize that, and we'll, I'm sure we'll miss some people, but if someone called up and says, that'd be the best thing. If people realize they missed something and they want it, that'd be great, because that one doesn't run around.
And then we also have to think of a future system, so right now it's going to be based on either, which is not a really, a great system, because if you're not here, you're away or whatever, you miss out on something, so you may need to think of a backup to.
We could have that link on our website.
Yeah, and Josette had mentioned actually having this sort of this thing, actually, so people could actually flip through them one by one on the website, too, which is a great idea. So that's another thing we can look at in the future.
Just got to get it on the website.
Yeah, get it on the website. Exactly. So I am, my plan right now, because I think it's, there's just one of me, is to pre-stuff like a bunch of these, so that I'm not constantly chasing around at the last minute, but rather just pulling one out, labeling it, and then getting them out. So, and since you've volunteered to help, I'll take you up.
How about earrings? We can stuff them also.
Okay.
How about earrings that are available at the village hall, anyway?
There could be some generics, absolutely. You might have somebody that's out to their passport.
Some I could just say, "Welcome."
Yeah. Like I said, the best part about this is if we do miss someone, we can just make up for it. We just get it to them. So, and we can have them in the village hall, so that somebody comes in for, say, a passport who wants to know more about the community, they can certainly, they can certainly have it, so. All right. I know Don's not here, but do we need to, do I need to get your approval formally, or can I just move ahead?
I think you could, from my point of view, I think you could move ahead with it.
Okay.
I think we're having, you made copies already.
Okay, all right. And it's okay for me to give?
Sir, you're the mayor.
Okay.
I don't mean to.
Oh, I forgot. I forgot.
So, and it's okay for me to get like initial, maybe 70 or 80 envelopes, is that okay? Do you have?
I would.
Okay.
You are promoting, you are promoting the village.
Well done.
So October, first week in October is the goal here, okay? All right, so the second thing that I had was the parks survey. I want to thank Jerry and Jake for meeting with me in our Parks Committee meeting, and they had some great input, which I hope is reflected on this survey. So there were a few typos here, too, that Joe pointed out, which I will fix, and one is I always call it Milton Case Park, which is right, the science of Milton Case, so I will definitely fix that. So the things we changed were really number four and five, which was instead of asking, instead of having amenities enumerated there under four, we're going to ask them what amenities they want to have, because it's a little presumptuous to know what they might want, but rather they could put it down or they could put nothing. So I mean, I see, and number five, Redland asking specifically what the, what certain conditions are, where it is asking them to rate the parks in general. So on a scale of one to five, with five being the best, which I'm assuming they're all going to, they're all going to get five, of course. So, you know, so we're, so that's the way, so that would be the, so those were the major, the major, that was, those were the differences. And of course, there's two, there's two surveys per sheet, that's to cut down the cost and make it easier to get it out, and it can be, it could be mailed back easily. There is, we don't necessarily want the return address, obviously, because it's a survey, but the village has pre-printed addresses here, and they can also put it at the Dropbox. Josette, do we still get stuff from the Dropbox? We do? Okay. All right, so that would be, so that's the, and the distribution here is the only challenge, but I figured if the board were willing, if you said two weeks, when do you get them out, or three weeks, when do you get them out, we could probably cover the whole village in three weeks comfortably by foot. So that would cut costs, make it easy to get each door, that kind of thing, rather than, because mail's extraordinary, and this would be an expensive project to mail. mail.
Yeah.
So, figure a thousand dollars at least.
Yeah. Sometime you put a snowflake or something.
Yeah. Well, if you give me your okay, I will work on getting them copied. Um, and, uh, that's it, it'll go out. And then, and when we just, whatever, I can give you updates on what we have back and give you updates on what it looks like. And I would say if we do this in October timeframe, by the end of the year, we'll have all, anybody that wants to do it, do it in three months. So, you know.
Usually a little heavier card stock?
Yes. I'm just giving you guys, I would just cheaply put it in a card stock.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, Jake.
You just said something about having them back in a certain amount of time. Did you any, kind of suggested, hey, please complete return by certain date, or would that be helpful to get a target?
That's a great idea.
I was thinking about, you know, when you're getting, uh, trying to get them back, give people a target date.
Okay, thanks. That's a good idea.
Maybe that where it says, please mail your surveys, drop it off.
Yeah, I can put it right in there.
There you go, right there.
So what, what do you, do you think 60 days or 90 days is pretty, what would your preference be?
If you have it at 90 days, I don't think you're gonna see it.
So 90 days?
Oh, he said it's two months.
So 60 days?
Yeah.
Let's say we do two months, let's say by, well, almost at October, so you wanna say by, so you wanna say by November, or like by December 15th or something? Or December 1st? Jake, see, did you shake your head, December 1st?
December 1st.
No, I didn't, I, I remember, uh, things appropriate.
Okay.
I mean, it's gotta be the first.
Yeah. So what do you think?
That's good.
December 1st.
Either the target gets out there, it'll be a little masquish, and puts a little bit more pressure on them, so.
Yeah. Okay, so what about December 1st? Okay.
They haven't done it by then, Christmas coming day.
Exactly.
Exactly.
You look pretty polished tonight, sir.
Thank you. I was, I noticed the temperature changed and I didn't have any time, but I got home, so I wore a works, I just wore, got my work attire tonight. Okay, so, um, do we need to, does this need to be approved formally, or do we wanna just, or is it okay, just go ahead?
You got my blessing.
I will need cop, I will need to make copies.
Yeah.
At the village hall, that's the only thing, so.
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir. We're okay with it.
Okay.
I think unanimous, uh, voice of opinion, you have our approval.
Okay. Jake, thank you for your input on this. He was very, he was very, he was very forgiving of me because I know he's, cause he was very, he was very good. So, thank you.
I have another idea too, I'm sorry. With the date, when we were talking about the date, I wonder if you can kinda relay some other information about the village in here and say, come drop it off or bring it with you on the trick or treat trail or the white Christmas in the village. I don't have room for all that on there, but.
I'll see what I can do.
You can highlight a couple other events and we'd have a little basket out there.
There you go. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Advertise it.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Break up your survey.
Break up your person.
People probably say, what, here's one. This is from my friend.
Is that ethical? Anyways, um, all right, I will, I'll see if I can, I'll see if I can, it's actually not, yeah. Okay, well, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Well, thank you.
We are, we are moving the things in the parks committee, I'll get you an update on that as well. Next month, we're gonna meet again. I figure this time, next time we meet, we'll have more to talk about and, um, Jerry and I can, can keep it. So.
The next time you meet, you may have another.
I was gonna say, nice to meet you.
Really?
I have another, I have an individual.
Oh, that's good.
Excellent, okay.
Yeah.
Good. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Peter.
Well, you work.
Thanks.
Next, we have an authorization for Mayor Byers to sign the lease and the memorandum of lease for T-Mobile site lease agreement. This line really does come in. And, um, so as an update, um, Horizon has, of course, been moving ahead, put a number of their antennas up already. Uh, AT&amp;T is doing groundwork. Um, they have been moving through this week, I believe, as well, uh, doing their groundwork. And now with this, uh, that completes the three with T-Mobile and signing this or getting approval for it tonight, uh, we will be able to move with all three of them as they move forward to make the transition. I was asked today about, uh, what may be happening, and it was by recollection that in terms of, once the antennas are off of the existing water towers and moved to the, um, the new tower that stands, um, in the spring of 2018, because it was not budgeted for it in 2017, however, the last communication that I was aware of with the former mayor, uh, was that, um, the water authority was looking to take down the smaller of the two water tanks in 2018, they were listed before that. So things will be off the tower, they will be able to do that. Um, NUD has, um, done a couple of the, uh, things that needed to be, um, addressed by the inspectors. There was a step that was missing and that was replaced and some scuffing galvanized and that had been done. And, uh, so I believe that we're pretty much, I'll leave that to you, Jake, to kind of say yes or no.
Yes.
I think we're pretty much done meeting the, the needs that were specified in that inspection.
Absolutely. I think as a, as a result of that inspection, there's a punch list of all, um, some items and, like you said, the majority are satisfied. And I think the remain, the outstanding items have to do with certifications, um, with some welding and inspection documentation. Documentation needs to be provided to satisfy the inspector. Um, I anticipate that there was discussions, emails back and forth today and, you know, updates on, on portions of those, uh, of those outstanding items. So I think we'll, uh, be in real good shape to, uh, drive ahead and get it packed and up and running.
This, uh, lease is, is going to run for five years and they have an automatic, um, renewal, uh, for five, five-year periods following that. So it could run, uh, for 30 years consecutively and after that, I believe that there's a one-year, uh, year-by-year renewal after that point in time, as far as I remember reading through that. There is a description of the, um, property premises that they will be using comprised of approximately about 260 square feet, depending additional portions of the property that they need to use. Um, there are also an agreement in terms of their rent. Uh, they will be starting, I believe, somewhere around the range of 2,000 and change, 34, 40 some dollars. But they will be increasing yearly at a 3% increase, which is in line with both AT&amp;T and Horizon. And agreed to that, they originally had 2%, they have agreed to 3%. So we are assisting on all three of the carriers.
Okay.
Yes.
Nice to have that completed.
Absolutely. So I would entertain a motion to authorize Mayor Byers to sign the lease and the memorandum of lease for T-Mobile mobile site lease agreement.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Okay.
Who is Cardi?
I'll jump right in.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Duncan?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye. Mayor Byers appeared.
Aye.
Motion passed.
You think you're in pain now?
There is an opportunity for, um, a grant of $50,000 through the Clean Community, um, program. And, so there are, and I believe, I believe we've talked about it, but there are four action items, uh, that we must complete in order to be eligible for it. Um, we hope to do more than, than those four. But the first one and foremost is to establish a resolution, in fact, to, uh, establish benchmarking requirements for municipal buildings in the village of Webster. Superintendent Swingley has been working on compiling the data for our buildings, um, energy, uh, usage, um, how much we've used and in terms of improvements that we've made, the decrease in the energy, uh, the carbon footprint, et cetera. And he's been putting it into a portfolio manager, which is required of us. So, uh, I'll read this, um, through, no, I won't read the whole thing. I will read the beginning of it, uh, except for the definitions. So, uh, it is at the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the village of Webster, Glanville County, New York, Hall of Community Meeting Hall, 29 South Avenue, the village of Webster, New York, on the 28th day of September, 2017, at 7:30 PM. There were present and, uh, the board is listed and all of them present. Following resolution was offered by Mayor Byers, seconded by trustee, approved for, moved for adoption. And we'll fill that in. Whereas, buildings are the single largest user of energy in the state of New York. The poorest performing buildings typically use several times the energy of the highest performing buildings for the exact same building use. And whereas, collecting, reporting and sharing building energy data on a regular basis allows municipal officials and public to understand the energy performance of municipal buildings relative to a similar building nationwide. And equipped with this information, the village of Webster is able to make smarter, more cost-effective operational and capital investment decisions, reward efficiency and drive widespread continuous improvement. And whereas, the village of Webster Board of Trustees desires to use building energy benchmarking, a process of measuring a building's energy use, tracking that use over time and comparing performance to similar buildings to promote the public health, safety and welfare by making the applicable, available, good, actionable information on municipal building energy use to help identify opportunities to cut costs and reduce pollution in the village of Webster. And whereas, the village of Webster Board of Trustees desires to establish procedures and more guidelines for the village of Webster staff to conduct each, uh, building energy benchmarking. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved and determined that the following specific policies and procedures are going to be adopted. And it goes on then to define, uh, the definitions in this, uh, policy and, uh, it does, uh, applicable to any building that has, I believe, over, I think it's over 1,000, um, square feet. Yep, 1,000 square feet. And disclosure, uh, I mention this to everybody, the department will make, Department be the Department of Public Works, and the village shall make available to the public on the internet, benchmarking, uh, benchmarking informations for the previous calendar year, you know, later than September 1st, 2018, and by September, one of each year thereafter, for covered municipal building. So the public will be informed of how we're doing in terms of the energy use in our buildings and how we are doing in terms of becoming more efficient. Um, the village shall maintain the records, uh, for a period of three years and, um, that I think is the, probably the, looking forward department. So, uh, it is a first step in benchmarking. Uh, there are a number of other ones that we're looking at and moving forward. The grant that would be available to us, there are six of them remaining in New York, uh, at least this area, are six $50,000 grants. And if we can get that grant, we're able to use that money in any way that can help for efficiency. And, um, so if I may have a second, I'd like to make this resolution, offer it to the board, uh, to approve, uh, the establishment of energy benchmarking requirements for certain municipal buildings in the village of Webster.
I'll second that.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Um, next we have a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a, an agreement, a renewal contract with SINTUS. Uh, I hope you've had an opportunity to look at this. What may be a little bit, um, strange is what you see at the top, where they talk about clothing description and, um, unit price. The question that I had was, we have moved away from our taking care of the cleaning and providing of clothing and, um, to providing monies to the employees in the union to do that on their own. But what this is, is if they wish to have, this is what they're charged and any charge is deducted from their account. So they have that account for the year and, um, any charge that is made is deducted from it on an ongoing basis, okay? What we would be responsible for, as far as I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, would be the mats down at the bottom and also for the shop towels and their freshers. So those are things that, um, the village would pay for. And according to Jake, I believe, mentioning that the shop towels themselves will probably be a savings with this contract of around a thousand dollars and the mats as well, if you're correct.
Yes.
So, I, I highly approve, I think, of this contract.
You got an expiration date, which is nice. They usually sneak in automatic renewal on all these things and you just, if you don't pay attention, you're in another year.
Uh, this is, uh, going along with the union contract. This is a contract that is in, specific to the length of time.
Perfect.
Until our renewal, uh, renegotiation.
May 22.
Thank you.
May, end of May 2012.
Uh, if I could have a motion, please?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
We have, uh, authorization being sought to send Mike Bradshaw to attend the pesticide We have authorization being sought to send Mike Bradshaw to attend the pesticide applicator training class, and it cost not to see $275. Where is it?
Liverpool.
Liverpool?
New York.
Thanks for that clarification. $275 wouldn't have dollars. It would be ocean or something.
Get it up to the airport.
You would need to get to New York now.
But he's a category six applicator, super great way. He needs a certain number of hours, continuing adding hours to keep that certification, which is expired, I think it's next June. So let's give an opportunity to get this classmate eight hours between the two days formers each day, and he needs eight hours. So I'm gonna try to give him everything he needs to do his re-certification. And the class itself is, I believe, $75 for the two days, and then the hotel, and there's, you know, that's why we put not to exceed class on there, because there's a per diem, but it's not a per diem, it's a re-aversion, you know, not to exceed a certain amount, it's the same as a per diem rate, so.
Entertained a motion, unauthorized.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Lawer?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We were attorney didn't have any information this evening. I would mention that our attorney is busy.
Yes.
Family Matters. His son is getting married on Saturday, so congratulations to the White family, the addition soon of a new daughter to the family. Budget and transfers, modifications, we have two for the modification. One of them, first of all, is from 010009090001, ballots of $2,034.38, to parks and rec contractual to allow man to associate, an invoice to be paid for survey down on North Avenue Properties. The New York State Department Transportation surplus property transfer. I do have a question, is that for that small piece of land that resides next to 104?
Yes.
Or is that?
Yep.
We, do we have the deed to that yet, or not?
Not yet, we're.
It's been what, four years, five years in the running?
I think about seven.
The breeze is steep.
I believe it. I think it was, it used to be McCoy's Frame Shop, and I believe Tom McCoy, they sent him a letter, you know, seeing if he would, as a neighboring property, if he would have any interest in, and he didn't at that time. And so he went over to the Village, and I believe it was my first year here, so it was almost eight years, when we started getting in contact with the state. The comptroller's office held it up for a few years because they wanted to review it all, every fee waived property transfer, but they didn't know how they wanted to review it, but they knew they wanted to.
No, no, no.
Took them a couple of years for one of those procedures, I guess.
You didn't know how to do it.
Then I will ask for a motion to approve this transfer.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Lawer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Second budget modification is to move $4,050 from reserve, transfer to reserve from account number 0410995900 to 0408813475 for the digestive repair and maintenance. Additional costs for the ground beat, rolex cable, and connection end for the digestive repair not previously budgeted before. And a motion to approve that.
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lawer?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Anybody have a question on the statement of expenditure? Another month or so, we'll be thinking to work to see how we're doing in the course of this.
Yeah, it's good.
Then Jake, I was going to say something with, whoops, I'm sorry. You don't have to wait, I'll come back to it. Well, we have been waiting, I think, for months, now a year, we're back.
Oh, well, that, yeah, that's right.
You've been out.
Yeah, who would have thought that hand surgery would be second name, but apparently it is. So I have ended my hand modeling career, so I'll probably see you again sometime in the near future. But I can play guitar again, so that's all that matters.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, so. I was getting real bit at slide for a while, because I only need one finger for that, so. But, oh, well, hello there. Okay, so you have my report in front of you?
Somebody gave you a card.
Turn into copperhead today.
No, I know, I'm a copperhead, otherwise I would be at that, right there.
Oh, dear.
Let's open it up.
Of course, I've been out of work for so long that I didn't have, like, a lot of violations and things to go over, although I am happy, first of all, that you approved the lease agreement for T-Mobile. That'll be happy, that I can finally process the permit. I think I've had that permit since July, and the guy's been calling me on a regular basis, you know, and I kept telling him I can't access the permit.
Lawyer.
Yeah, sure, sure. Also anticipation of the energy audit. In keeping the historical charm of the Village, we're going to be installing wood burning stoves. I think in the budget, we've got a, we're going to be purchasing a wood splitter and teaching all the staff up front how to use that, so. And we figured, you know, that would really knock it out of the park if we, you know, didn't.
Well, we've got a lot of wood, sure.
Yes.
So we won't be paying for any wood. Anyway, so let's just.
It's got a little charm, actually, you know that?
Yep.
To the optist, all people come in.
A wood splitter.
No, a wood stove.
No, a wood stove.
That's art.
It's glittering.
It is, but we'll get a pseudo fire. So on a positive note, Maplewood Nursing Home is moving right along. They made some modifications, Jake and I noticed, and they came back and rectified some of the things that we inspected. On here under miscellaneous, I've noted that we were going to be having the final inspection on the commercial bakery this Friday. However, due to unforeseen incidents, one being R G D flipped the wrong switch and shut off the power for, like, the whole area over there, including Smith Insurance and everything, it kind of put the scandal behind a little bit. So this Wednesday, the next, or excuse me, next Wednesday, the Fire Marshal and I will be doing the final inspection on the lower half, and they already have a tenant for the upper half as well. It's like an aerobic studio of some sort, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. The only other thing I wanted to mention, real briefly, hopefully briefly, is in keeping with the one aspect of my job, which is public safety, and I received different emails from the, you know, State Department of State, Coes Division, and in this particular case, I received a very timely note from the Division of Consumer Protection, and I'd just like to address everybody out there in TV land there regarding fire safety tips. And the first is, you know, the most simplest fire safety tip, and the most useful too, you have in the house, is the smoke detector. What a lot of people don't realize, it's not so much the heat and the fire that kill them, it's the smoke and the gases that kill them, and a lot of people will die right in their sleep, even before the fire gets to them. And so the smoke detector is an important device, and so to make sure that your smoke detectors are working. We now have smoke detectors that have 10-year lifespan on the batteries, and all new smoke detectors are supposed to be going to that 10-year life smoke detector anyways. And we also need in the houses a carbon dioxide detector as well for all those carbon oxide producing devices in the house. If you can, it's probably best to hardwire, interconnect the smoke detectors, that way if one goes off, they all go off, so it's an important feature, and it's a good feature. If you're in a situation where you need assistance, for instance, you are deaf, or even just hard of hearing, to make sure that there are other devices such as strobe lights, flash, that flash when the smoke detector sounds. They even have pillow and bed shakers, so that when the smoke detector goes off, it triggers the pillow or the bed to shake to wake up the person who's deaf. Should be testing your alarms twice a month, and also to review the Public Safety Commission website to make sure that there are no recalls on any different particular smoke detectors that are out there. Secondly, it's important to have a home escape plan. I remember years ago, when I was younger, that was big, and you would actually practice it, and they would have the commercials on the TV and tell you how to escape out of the house during the event of a fire and everything like that. So they recommend that you plan your home escape, including two ways out of each room, and share the escape plan with everybody in the family, including guests. The plan should include two ways out of every room and an outside family meeting place. So again, to make sure, just like when we have the, in school, we, you know, we would leave the school, we would all move to a location, and the teacher would tell all the heads, same type of thing. Practice fire drill. I don't know if we've ever actually practiced a fire drill in our house, but this actually got me thinking about it. Make sure that children and older adults and people with disabilities have assistance. Make sure your home has bright lighting and stairways to prevent falls. Remove clutter to prevent trips and falls to allow for a quick escape. Now, how many times do we think of that? Because when the house is on fire, you see the movies, and the guys are all running through, and, you know, it, that's not how it happens. The house becomes pitch black, you can't see a thing. And if you have things in your hallway, you're trying to make it out of your hallway, that just adds a tripping hazard, and it could be detrimental to your health. Install hand rails along the full length of both sides of the stairs. If you live in an apartment, and this is important, know the location of all available exit stairs on your floor in case the nearest one is blocked by fire or smoke. Use the stairs to get out. Never use the elevator unless directed by the fire department. And last of all, if there is a fire, get out set quickly and dial 911. So that's it.
Our fire escape is available at the fire department.
spoken there?
Yes.
Jake?
They have.
Home Depot. Yes.
I know you'd be here, but I thought I'd cover them.
I mean, I've known them to have them available and give them to people in certain circumstances.
That's some good analysis.
Why?
Free.
Yep.
Is the Village Office that practiced fire drills in all these areas?
Well, actually, every now and then the alarm does go off.
Yeah.
Every now and then the alarm does go off, and we're alerted to, you know, to possibility of danger, but nine out of 10 times, it's because we have heat detectors in our garage, because the trucks with the stacks, they blow the carbon dioxide in the air, and it would set off the smoke detectors all the time, so the heat detectors. What happens every now and then is someone will park the truck with it running underneath one of the heat detectors, and they'll set it off, and then we gotta call the alarm company and call the fire department. But they work, they work. They work, that's right, they work, oh my gosh. They're loud and obnoxious, which they should be. Okay? You're welcome. Thank you. Well, a quick question, Will.
Yes, sir.
Updates on some of the new shops coming to the Village, timetables, any ideas?
Well, like I said, as far as 44 North there, with Mr. Fitzsimmons, the, we're going to be having the final next Wednesday, and so, but that's going to be a commercial bakery. I would really recommend any of you to go visit that, it is a truly a marvel. I can't say how much he invested, but I would imagine it's a substantial sum. They've got all kinds of automated equipment in there, it's just, I felt like I was watching a program on television, you know, where they visit something like that, and they show all the different mechanical devices that go into making the baked goods and so on, so, but.
Well, maybe we could get a little tour, just Charlie, and maybe we could.
Someone asked if there's going to be like a grand opening or something like that, you know, kind of.
Well, yeah, but I mean, maybe before they're, before it's working.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I.
Could you imagine that?
And it's by East Main, I've got an application for a catering place to go in there, that's where the old Mars, that's where the old Mars Pizzeria.
Is there, is there a jeweler coming as well?
That I'm not aware of.
Oh, wait, oh, 13, that's right, on South Avenue, yeah. We'll call him a jeweler.
Who's that?
Over on 13 South Avenue, where the old Rowdy's do it. Got a jeweler coming in there, which he should be going in fairly soon. Trying to pick up who else. Our salon, you know, is already running and going. Talked about the fitness studio in the upper half of 44.
Filling stations along Target.
Yeah, we're working with that one. There was Thanksgiving.
Yeah, let's go in.
Well, Thanksgiving, I'm trying to get ahold of the owner. Okay, so with that one, it's problem of definitions. So in other words, I, my question is, is it a restaurant that serves alcohol, or is it a bar that serves food?
What's everything easy to explain to you?
What's the difference?
If it's a restaurant that serves alcohol, they can go in administratively. But if it's a bar that serves food, then we have to bring them to book line.
Because they have really good fish fry, so I would see.
Yeah, they do.
Best steak you ever ate. The beer is in there.
I'm works there, so, you know, we really.
Do you eat on there?
Yeah.
So, that's it.
My personal would be the restaurant that serves.
Exactly.
And ten.
Exactly.
He has the.
Filling stations. Building's.
Oh, that's good.
It's a shooting for Thanksgiving. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Jake?
Okay.
I just want to build up one thing that Will said, and as a segue, I guess, is I think the most important thing he talked about in the fire, the smoke detectors discussion there, and fire safety was the smoke detectors. If anybody has a chance, and I don't know what it's called, but there's a fascinating video, and you can look up, I'm sure it's on YouTube, that talks about, or shows you the difference between a modern room and contents fire, or a room, you know, legacy room, they call it. Years ago, all the material was wood, cotton, and wool, natural materials there, and nowadays, there's hardly anything made of that, and the way that affects the smoke that's produced, and the toxicity of the smoke, and the chemicals that are in it, and the spread of the fire. They've got one thing, in the legacy room, or the modern room, it flashes over in like five minutes, less than five minutes, I believe, before the fire flashes over, and it's just blowing everywhere, and in the legacy room, it's probably 25 minutes, and it's getting 20, 25, 28, and it's just getting to that same stage. So the difference in materials, the difference in fuel, you think about it, so many things are petroleum based, and one guy calls furniture solid gasoline, and that's really what it is. And a lot of products are petroleum based, and today's furniture, carpet, anything, anything and everything, and the plastics, and as Will said too, with the smoke, it's just pitch black, there's, you can't see.
Basically, if, I think it's less than a minute, and your smoke detector goes off to get out of the house.
Roughly. Yeah, and they also discuss, I don't know if it's discussed in our closing doors, closing bedroom doors at night and thing. It's amazing, even what a little hollow corridor can do, and how could the rent, the air movement, and even, you know, fire spread, or just the heat, and then, so, you know, behind a little hollow corridor that you could probably punch through, it really.
It saves.
It does, it's amazing, it's amazing what they can do, but that's just, you know, it's a great, great points that he had, and, I mean, somebody signed it to him, he didn't come up with it himself, but there we go.
Man, take it better than that.
You have an example of that, right? Your prior, you had to learn a wool suit.
Yes, yes.
Woolen, going up, or it's cotton or polyester suit.
Yeah.
And he played up.
That was a good example. It's on there.
Couple things with, on the TPW portion of it, one thing before I forget, I wanted to share with the Board, Fuller Avenue, the other day, we, or yesterday, we put in a, they call it horn top light, it's an LED light that's drop in for street lights, so I encourage everybody to drive down Fuller, it's about halfway down, you'll see it, it's about halfway down on the south side of Fuller. It's just one, just a test to see how that looks. We're going to put another one up on Dunne, kind of just south of Elm, but it's a little higher wattage, to kind of compare and see what the differences are. One of the biggest behind the LEDs is the intensity of light, and the way that it spreads. I would, I gotta say, I was pleasantly surprised. It's a different color light than what we have now, and obviously, we're not going to put them in, you know, we're going to either put a street or not put a street.
Exactly.
But we're doing it now to test, so we can compare it kind of side by side, and see how, see how it looks. You know, I'm trying to take one, just as itself to look, and these are just going to post-up lights, but it was, it was pretty neat. So take a peek out there, and then keep an eye on, on Dunne Avenue, we're going to put a test one in there too, and we're going to talk about trying something on helping the business district too. And we want to be able to light the street and sidewalk, and provide a little bit of extra lighting, but not, you know, not light up somebody's house too, so, trying to kind of balance there. That's one of the things there. Keep an eye on the website, the, you know, leaf season's going to start pretty soon, and I always try to remind people to not put them in the gutter, put them on the edge of the grass, or in the street, you know, if you have curbs, keep them on the grass, we'll get, we can reach them. If you put them in the gutter, it seems like leaf season and rainy season kind of coincide all the time, and it just causes a lot of problems and pluses. Now, get in the street, and go get on the block, the drains anyway, so, just always want to remind people of that. Lastly, one of the things, well, two things, I guess, I don't know if you guys have stopped up the Village Hall last week, or, you know, in the garage, last week we had, or week before, actually, we had a demo of a. used for our sidewalks, they're about a hundred and forty thousand dollars now. Ideally, you use them three months out of the year, and then they sit the rest of the time. We're looking for alternatives to that. If you recall, at Dunne, we're on the board, when we got it, or shortly after, we had Bobcat S one hundred, it's a small, smaller Bobcat, but it's narrow, so it fits on the sidewalks. That does a pretty decent job, but when we get into heavier snow and snow areas, it gives us a real, real hard time. We've worked with, we're working with Admar, looking at this mini articulated motor. Bottom line, the loader with the snow blower, it's an aftermarket snow blower that we tested out, is what around, we went over with them in around, they run, it's a Provenos snow blower, they call it, or Provenos. We had to come over and demoed it. By the time, you know, it was pretty busy with the demo, by the time they could get over to us, the only snow that was left is what we transferred down to the pad of the sewage treatment plant, that it froze, and it dogged, refroze, and it was a solid pack that you could walk on, and the thing walked right through it without a problem. So, it was very impressive, and I'm not even sure if the trackless can do that, that's always made a new one. I mean, I think a brand new one, I'm sure probably could, but it was, it was impressive machine, especially that, that snow blower, and that's the, you know, when we really have a lot of snow, or that's when you need it the most, you know, so it was impressive. That and the bead plow, and the machine itself, obviously, with the button on the front for another loading, you can use it at different times of the year, or all year, with that, with that type of machine. All outfitted, it was about eighty-one thousand dollars. There's, on state bid, that's, you know, state bid price, we had them come out and look in their availability, and our track, or our skid steer, our little S one hundred, we, it's a two thousand and twelve, we paid it, I want to say twenty-five to twenty-seven thousand dollars for it, and indications now will be between fifteen and twenty thousand per trade-in. It's really good shape. So, I think if, if we can do that, I'd like to request, they would like to get a letter of intent. I'm going to try to send it out and see, I know we typically don't do things on workshop meetings, but I'd like to see even if we could get it out, and let the board, so I can get that letter of intent. There's a long lead time on the snow blower. What they were, what they were going to do is send it to the snow blower, the standard one, if you will, send it out until our snow blower comes in. Hopefully, we won't need it till like February or March, but there's a pretty good, I got a pretty good idea, we'll have to use it before then. So, whenever, as soon as we can get this order, we can do a swap. It would require, we had two hundred and forty-six in the vehicle line this year, and we've spent about two fifteen today, or not, we haven't spent it, but it's encumbered through the trucks. Ultimately, we would end up requesting about a thirty, I think about thirty-six thousand dollar budget modification, because then that cost, I think it was eighty-one thousand, and we take twenty off of it, you know, we're obviously down to sixty-one, and if we have about thirty-six, it was thirty to thirty-five that we'd be looking for. I went to see Chris this afternoon, and I was a little bit late, and she wasn't available, so, we got tied up today, running all around, so, I just wanted to finalize some stuff with her, so, with your permission, I'd like to see if we can put that on the workshop agenda to discuss, and even, you know, next Tuesday, see if I can get a, a letter, sign a letter of intent, that'll help keep, get everything going with the suppliers.
On page.
And then I could have more time to get information from Chris. But it's, it was a great piece of machinery. The other thing that I'd like to see, I know we've been discussing it, or kicking around, is maybe the streetlights, if we can put that on for the workshop, and discuss the streetlight acquisition there with RGE. I think there's some, some things that are unknown, some, we're not going to know a hundred percent, but there's a lot of things that I think we need to kick around and see. I, I think it's a great idea if we do it, and every indication, all the other municipalities that did it, enjoy it, and think it's worked out well, but just to make sure that we're, and maybe you guys would have some great ideas that we could look at, and try to get more info, and we can kick things around, and see if we can do it, even move forward or, or not with that.
You're glad to get any more information, I know you were working on it, do you want to bring anything more to us and for that time?
Yeah, that's why I want to try, try to get the more, more information. He's been, he's been discussing things, I want to, you know, try to shore up. Obviously, without an electrician on staff here, and I don't think we need to have an electrician on staff, but there's a certain, certain amount of things that we, we can do. I think there's equipment, at least have an access to, or maybe build up to, you know, especially if we have the copper headlights, and then get more information, because we can kind of leverage, once we have them, we can leverage what, you know, our savings, once we own, and start changing other things over to LED lights, those copper heads, and save a considerable, even, you know, saving, they, they discussed about a, I think about a forty-five percent savings annually on the, on the cost.
Just initial investment in that.
Right, but some of that's going to be offset by additional labor, things that we have to do, or contracts that we're going to have to do to have some of the work done. But then if we, you know, we can cut another ten, fifteen, twenty percent off, or even more on the remaining energy portion, I guess, we switch over to LED, by all indication, they're lower maintenance, longer lasting, I think it'd be, you know, a pretty neat thing, but it's, and they're one of the biggest expenses we have.
Would you, for me, just change in all the, the LEDs in the house?
Yeah. That's it. If I jump right into the sewer department, I guess, this update on that project, the, as, we talked about before the budget, my dedication cables. In the digester, there's the piping that we, that we got replaced, and we discovered, once we got the, it's like sheep dogs that were hanging on it, once we got those off, you can see some of the issues with the piping. We opted now, indecisively, to change the piping while it was exposed and while it's open. We have piping supported by cables, some of the cables, we decided the condition of those, we should get those things changed, and they kind of hold them in place. Those are, the cable and everything's there, we're trying to coordinate now, it's scheduled next week to go, to have the cover back on the cables, because of the depth and the vastness of that digester, which has been empty for, obviously, since, since the, since the cover, well, not since the cover's been off, but shortly afterwards, it's just a huge empty tank. We're going to utilize when the grains are, utilize the man basket on the cane, on the cage, or on the crane, be able to put the, put the cables in place, get the personnel into the centers, and where they have to be without trying to do it all with ladders on a silvery floor, and then get the cover back on.
Okay, okay.
So, there's a real.
How was the BOD report then? Good? A little bit more aligned than we were before?
I think there's still, there's still some, some issues, I think, because of how many solids we have to hold right now, and the, you know, the way that, obviously, the plant's not operating at, at top efficiency right now, so, with that digester, it's a big, big thing. Getting solids moved around, and that's basically a large portion of the process of sewage treatment is removing the solids, settling them out, or skimming them off, getting the solids out of the, out of the influent, and moving those over and letting the bugs do their work, digest, and anything else that's suspended, that's what the trickery filter does, there's our, recirculates around and gets them over. That reminds me too of the, of the study, and now here, on the study draft, I don't know if anybody, this is one long sentence, isn't it? It's about one paper. That's right. I had a little coffee today, too. I always want to have it on Thursdays, but, the, the study, I don't know if anybody has any comments, and the board, any comments or questions or anything, I want to make sure to get that back to Labella, that's the, you know, with the presentation they made, the study, we need a time to review. I sent them, just, you know, as minor little questions that I had or something, John, I think, sent them some information, so if the board has anything, even later tonight or tomorrow morning, if we get it, I'd like to get it, you know, late morning tomorrow, send it over and say, hey, this, everybody's reviewed it, and, you know, here's the things, or here's not the things, if there's any comments, or even, hey, it looks good, so I can, so I can confidently send something to them, and they can continue making, going from the draft to the, to the final version, and finish up the report. So, yeah, just let me know, I think, either way, or I guess I'm going to hear anything by ten o'clock or so tomorrow morning, I'll see if everybody is good with it.
Thank you.
Now, I'm going to go.
I would announce that, in terms of announcements, we have events that are coming up. First one will be October twenty eighth, and that is Trick or Treat Trail in the Village. The street will be closing this year for it. Last year, there were a lot of people that were in the street, kids were on the outside, the street side of the cars, trying to get through with the number of people that were there, so, it will be closed to traffic during the time. So, we are looking for volunteers, anyone who would like to help with that event, and contact either the bid or Village Hall, we will be looking for volunteers for that. And after that, November eleventh, we'll be into Veterans Day, and we'll be doing the Veterans Day luncheon in here again, after the ceremony in the morning, and, so, if anybody would like to help with that, in terms of the servant setting up, taking down anything like that, we would appreciate that as well.
I'm going to have to help otherwise.
The next meeting is on the third, next Tuesday, for our workshop. You've already heard that there are several things that are going to be on that workshop for next Tuesday, so, if you are interested, please come. And our next Village Board meeting will be October twelfth, right here, at seven thirty. At this time, I would like to ask the board to go into executive session for the discussion of the promotion, the motion, employment, discipline of a specific individual or individuals and or board member.
Sorry, you're outdone.
All right, so we're going to go with that. I'll make that motion.
One second.
Trusty Alito.
Aye.
Trusty Buckaine. Trusty Lawler.
Aye.
Trusty Lindsay.
Aye.
May Fire.
Aye.
Time is easy to choose.
All right, we'll be open. Jake, you have some fire personnel, Arthur Pickel, right down the sidewalk up to the door.
Yeah, they were, they were coming in, they wanted to stay out of the room, way they ever at us, there was heavy smoke in the building at Harden's Knob.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, they responded rapidly.
Nice.
Yeah, I had more time, I would have gone there, there was candy bars in the register, probably didn't save them.
Working on that.
It is nineteen fifteen, and motion to come out of executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And to go further business, I have a motion to adjourn.
I think I'll make that. I'll second it.
Trusty Alito.
Aye.
Trusty Lawler.
Aye.
Trusty Buckaine.
Aye.
Lindsay.
Aye.
Aye.